All things ready to go?
Everything's ready to go.
Okay, so we'll open the meeting, a special meeting of May 11th, 2023, of the City of Depot Bay City Council. And Kim, it looks like we have a form. Do we need to call? Roll?
I could just confirm for the record that we have Mayor Short, Councillor Beasley, Councillor Sovereign, Councillor Rec, and Councillor Beddingfield. And Councillor King is on her way, and Councillor Watson wasn't enabled to join us. We also for the call have staff, my me, and then also Brady Wagner from the public.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm gonna just turn the meeting over to you because you have all of the details and I don't.
Well, it's mostly about gonna be about Joyce, but I can share. So the biggest thing is, is I'm gonna share my screen for a minute. We got the contract from the, who is it? The?
Blue Varian.
Yeah, so can you guys see this document with the green highlighted?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the addendum that he sent, and he's a lawyer. So I, some of these other accommodations that there were really no concerns about, but the one which is really the main reason that I wanted to talk to you guys is about this things in green. Okay, so first of all, he's expecting to have a minimum length of forty minutes to perform.
Each set.
Each set. So even though he's acknowledged that they do intend to be speakers, he's saying that in this agreement, he wants forty minutes. But my bigger concern is to be below or it says that essentially at any time after eleven AM, he can decide to not perform due to weather, and we would have to pay the full three hundred and fifty. So he could decide at eleven thirty if it starts sprinkling and he doesn't want to play, he can say, oh, never mind, and a city would be obligated to pay him three hundred and fifty. So I had, I had thought and proposed that I would rather possibly see a scaling schedule, like say, for example, after if it's before eleven, no, nobody gets paid. If we cancel it to or he just canceled it too, he gets fifty percent before two, you know, or something like that, rather than the full amount. But that is entirely up to the council and their wishes. But before you decide on that, Brady has some input he would like to share with you.
Yeah, if you could hear me. I don't think we should move forward with the band due to the fact that they are quite loud. And I was told by the head guy Greg Ernst that nobody's gonna tell him to turn it down if we're asked to turn the volume down. And that the speakers and people that wanna talk are just gonna have to wait till the sets are over with. And I was kind of treated kind of forward, which kind of led me to believe that it's, it's, it's not gonna be user friendly for our event. And it's, it's already starting out where I feel that he thinks the whole event's gonna be about him and his performance and not the city. I know he was kind of a backup and was recommended kind of at the last minute. But I, I feel that we should just say that the contract doesn't sound right. We have a lot of inclement weather and that we were probably gonna do more speaking and because of the demands of the performances that forty minutes four times through the four hour period, it's not gonna leave any time for the flute player to play, the flutist, the Indian, American Indian flute, also the families. But on the other hand, too, if we cancel the Blue Varian Band, that Michael and I have it covered with another acoustic guitar player that's very good. He's a vocal guy who lives on Williams Avenue, his name's Stan Eng. And he plays a lot of acoustic Beatles and some of, some really cool stuff. And, and he played at the Salmon Bake and he's very good. Also the American Flutist. And I think between Michael Dain and those two other fellows, we should be fine. And then we'd have more time for people to speak.
He's just really worried that they, the, the one, the lawyer one will be very restrictive and very demanding and probably more rigid than when we, and quite loud and probably more rigid than, than we want the event to be.
Okay, so if that's the pleasure of the council, I'll be happy to call him and just let him know the situation.
Joyce is here. She's on my phone.
Oh, I hear it. We're doing the same thing, huh?
Well, no, I tried saying and I clicked on the link and it's not taking me anywhere. Okay?
Yeah, that's, that's what I had. We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, can I, can I say something? Nothing? Okay, um, when I posted the flutists information, we really got a lot of likes and people were going, oh, we really need to go hear this. So I think a hundred dollars is too little to pay him.
Yes.
We absolutely need to re-reconfirm him. He seems like a great guy. It seems like the perfect fit. I absolutely agree with what Brady's saying. Loud, you know, it sounds like, I mean, they're probably great musicians, but it sounds like they kind of have an attitude to match.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am, and particularly if you have another acoustic guitar person, I mean, that's a perfect fit. So.
I would just call him Joyce and say, thanks, but no thanks.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll be happy to.
Is that the will of the council?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
That, that was our, that was our major concern because I just couldn't see paying him three hundred and fifty if he decides before he even begins to play at all. And I thought that was really just not, not fair. And then Brady told me all this other stuff today, and I was like, oh, okay, you need to talk to the council tonight and tell them about this.
Yeah, and we could, we could make the flutist, we could take care of the flutist with a little more money and have him play more.
Yes.
So if, so if we take the three hundred and fifty plus the that we were gonna play the flutist, that's four hundred. So we could pay all of them, Michael, the Stan, I didn't catch his last name, and the flutist a hundred and fifty each and not be a little bit too far behind.
We actually had a budget of six hundred dollars, so.
Six hundred?
Yeah, I put six hundred in the budget because I thought we would have two performers.
So now we.
Should we pay him like two hundred dollars each?
Sure. Let's do two hundred apiece, guys. Let's not be chintzy.
Okay, that sounds good. I think so. So I will call.
Fran, you're on mute.
Oh, what was Stan's last name?
Brady?
E, E, Eng, Eng, Stan Eng. He lives on Ludson. He, he lives just below Karen Rose's house on, on Allen Street, behind seventy-six on Williams.
I love it. You guys know where everybody lives.
Yeah, but I still didn't. Can you please repeat his name?
Stan?
No, not Brady. I can't hear.
Oh, Stan, Stan, S.T.A.N., and then E.N.G., Brady, is that right?
Yes.
E.N.G.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry to, I, sorry, I misunderstood that.
And, and tell him he's played at the Fishing Rock and he plays different venues. He's very good and has played at the Salmon Bake for us last year.
And, and I don't know if you guys heard that, but Brady said he's played at the Fishing Rock and did play for Salmon Bake last year. So, okay.
Cool.
Any feedback on that? We're all good?
And I'll, I will call the flutist and give him the information about the upgrade, what we're gonna pay him. And then I'll call Greg Ernst to let him know that we're gonna get.
And then. Michael's been in touch with Vince Redhouse, the flutist.
And then if you guys will send me information on Stan's, on Stan, I'll include that with.
Yeah, I will. I'll get that tomorrow.
Thanks.
Okay.
Now, next on the agenda?
Uh, excuse me, Councillor Rec has something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She raised her hand.
Thank you. Um, so do we have a, a schedule or proposed schedule? I mean, I think.
Brad.
Yeah, we are.
Fran, you're off mute again.
Okay, sorry. When people are coming.
Brady, Brady, wait, wait, wait. Brady, wait.
I would like to see a written schedule, please, of what we're thinking. It seems to me that when people are coming, we'd have some music. And then we'd have whatever we are gonna do, either dedication of the sign, I don't know when that's gonna happen, or when we invite people up. But that would be really nice to, to know. Thank you.
I, I actually am grateful that you brought that up, councillor, because I think we need a schedule too. The only thing that I know for certain is that, in fact, I got it confirmed in the minutes today that the dedication's at twelve thirty. But we really should probably have a little bit more structure, like, for example, when are you gonna cut the cakes? When are you gonna serve the cakes? That sort of thing. So maybe that's something, you know.
Yeah, we'll figure out the schedule and have the music and everything else.
I'm sorry, hang on a second. I, pardon me, I think Joyce is talking?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought, I, I thought it was clear. Brady and I actually talked about the schedule and he was going to do that. So I think you're right, we need to have more of a schedule for like when we're gonna cut the cakes and when are we gonna do all the things we're going to do. So that sounds like we're on the same, same track.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we can't be fluid if we need to be, but it just gives us some more structure so that we're not running around wondering who's gonna do what when. So.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
All righty.
So.
Are we doing t-shirts?
Yeah, so the reason that I put t-shirts on there is because I wanted to get everybody on the same page with who, because we have the thirty volunteer shirts. Who's getting the shirts? Because we didn't, we talked about it, we talked about the volunteers. But knowing how many volunteers we have, and it might be good for Valerie, Councillor Sovereign, to give us a report with who she has, and then determining who do you want to give these free t-shirts to? I think that is something I, I wanted all of you to decide on. Like, is it the council? Is it the, all of the volunteers? Kathy had mentioned city staff, but not all city staff is gonna be able to attend. And I just wanna make sure that you guys are good on the shirts.
Well, my thought would be certainly to give it to the city staff that's going to be at the event. As far as giving city shirts to everyone, I don't know that we made that determination. I'm fine either way, but we should definitely give, give one to city council and anybody from the city that is, that is going to be at the event.
I have eleven.
She has eleven volunteers, right?
Yeah, so I don't need a t-shirt. But I would like to give something for the event for helping.
Well, I, I think that the city council, we said, would get a t-shirt. So you would definitely get a t-shirt, Valerie.
Okay.
So with your eleven plus the seven council, you know, that gives you eighteen. So you still have some more shirts left. And I know, I mean, I know I plan to be there, but I'm, and Brady plans to be there.
Yeah, and I have one volunteer.
Okay. You know, uh, do you wanna give them out to, I know we're paying Michael and the ones that are performing, don't do that? Okay, Councillor Rec is saying no, Councillor Beddingfield is shaking her head yes.
I'm, I.
Either that or she's rocking to music. I don't know.
I, I don't, I don't know how often they would wear them.
Right, right. Okay, so, so that's what we're, everybody's in agreement with. So city council, the eleven or twelve volunteers that we have, and then any staff that participates during the event.
Right, and with Mayor Short, of course.
This one.
And for Brady and for, you know, you and the, the, anyone that comes to the event.
Okay, um, can we have people email us? Email me or card of the sizes that you want so that when, when the shirts are inventory, we can pull those out to make sure that we give, we have the right ones.
Will do. Okay, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there anything else? I, I'm sorry, I was trying to remember everything we were talking about. Is there any questions or anything else that we need to decide before the meeting on Tuesday? Oh, Councillor Rec.
I would love to address the, the food truck situation.
Oh, okay.
I don't guess you've, you've talked to the council about that. We, as you know, we had Sis Kwame and we have Rubs on, food trucks. And as of last Friday, I got word from Sis Kwame, from Debbie Miller, Debbie, you know, Debbie Mark, that she was concerned about the lack of advertising for this particular event. And of course, we have been advertising, we've been advertising on social media. The postcards were, are coming out, I let her know that. She was gravely concerned about it, in the fact that I, I was under the impression she might be thinking about not coming to the event. And I, you know, told her, and Kathy actually called her as well, left her a message and told her all the things we had been doing, tried to reassure her. And then I tried to call her back to see what she thought about the situation. We tried to encourage her, let her know that we have advertising as much as possible. And so really worried about it because at the eleventh hour, I didn't wanna have just one food truck. I thought that would not be appropriate. So I requested that a news release go out. And then realized that we had talked about not doing that in previous meetings. But I think that because she was so concerned about having enough clients, she was worried that she wouldn't be making her quota. She says she has six employees that need to have a good turnout for this. I thought that a, not a story, but a press release going to the Newport News newspaper was appropriate. So that's what we're, we did. I called her back. She was thrilled to death. I also let Rubs on know, Rubs on know as well she was concerned about it. So they're very happy. They want to make money. I want them to make money. I want the beer guards to make money. So that's the decision that I made.
I'm pretty pissed off, Joyce.
Hi.
We clearly discussed.
Hang on, Brady.
I gotta chime in.
Hang on, Brady.
We clearly discussed it more than one time at multiple meetings. Mr. Beasley brought it up. He was in favor of, you know, advertising, and the rest of the council was not. And this is not how we made, make decisions. And this is really disappointing. And, you know, the idea that you can ask forgiveness after sort of makes me infuriated. That's my statement.
Well, I, I appreciate that statement. I understand where you're coming from. My decision was that we only had a limited time to get word out that we were gonna have this event. And so that, that was limited.
But didn't they sign an agreement? They signed an agreement.
Well, they, they did, but they were trying to cancel it. You know, if you sign an agreement, you can get out of it. You just have your own issues. And so they did, we have a signed agreement for both of the food trucks. But, you know, they can call the day before if they want to and decline. So that was my decision. Sorry if not everyone's comfortable with it. But that was the decision that I made at the last minute.
And I agree with the decision. I think, you know, we're not advertising and paying any money out. It's just a promo saying the city is turning fifty. We've got Chief Depot coming and his family. And we're not inviting anybody to join us. It was just a, this is what's going on in Depot Bay this weekend. So I agree with it.
Well, thank you.
So let's move on. I do have some news on Chief Depot.
Wait, Kathy, wait. This is not how we make decisions. Whether the decision was justified or not.
We're not spending any money on this.
It's not the issue. It's how decisions are made in the city. And we have a seven-member council. And nobody is authorized to make decisions independent of the full council.
Well, we made the decision.
This is a big issue.
Well, Fran, what would you, what, what do you want me to do at this point?
What's coming out tomorrow, so there's nothing we can do.
Fran, what would you like me to do?
If it's true that it's coming out tomorrow, we can't do anything. But it shouldn't come out the next Friday.
No, we had one article just saying simply that we had had, you know, all of this celebration going on in Depot Bay. People were not invited to join us. It was just a simple, this is what's happening. And it did mention the food trucks by name so that we had some, some sort of promo going on. So. So let's move on to Chief Depot.
Could I just ask one quick question? Did anybody from the place you sent the press release call you to follow up at all? Or, I mean, we don't know if they're going to use. So you didn't.
Oh, okay. I did not.
Okay.
Haven't heard anything. I think we were put down, the city was put down as, as a contact in case there was any questions about the, the release. But no, nobody's, we haven't heard anything there.
Okay.
Brady did wanna speak about that. Brady, or do you wanna hear from Brady on this?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I was asked about advertising on the radio and I told them that we were not going to do that. But I did get a quote and an email back from the radio station. And I don't know if that was through when Kira Morgan was here. She's from the radio station also. I don't know if that was, but that was, I think, just an interview of news in that that was at no cost. When, and it was a radio interview.
If that's the one that they talked about being here, there, I think there was a miscommunication. There was, Kira Morgan did not show up here.
Oh, she, oh, well, she was at City Hall yesterday, or something like that, or day before.
No, she was not. The person she was supposed to meet was here.
Oh, I see. That wasn't her. Okay, that was, okay, then I'm mistaken. But I did get a quote from the radio station and I, I said that they're not going to advertise on the radio. Because that's what the decision was a while ago.
We, we spent absolutely zero on advertising. The postcards went out today.
Right, right. So I just, just wanted to let you know that that occurred also.
Thank you, Brady.
Okay.
Thanks, Brady.
We do have Chief Depot and the Pacific View Lodging has graciously provided lodging for he and his family. And they were wondering if we wanted to have any sort of welcome package from the city. And I just wanted your opinions on that.
Who, who was wondering, Cat?
Uh, the owners of Pacific View Lodging.
Oh, oh, if you wanted to put like a gift basket or something, them put in their rooms?
Yeah.
I, I think that would be fine. How many people are gonna be coming?
Fifteen.
Oh, gee.
I know.
They're, they're gonna put all fifteen up. Wow, that's nice of them.
I know.
Seems though, and I hate to be a bit contradictory, but the primary person that we really want to be invited and wanted to be here is the chief.
Yes.
So I think if we did anything, it would be for him.
Okay.
Again, this is at the council pleasure.
I think that would be fine, you know, just to pick up some local types of maybe a bottle of wine and some food or treats or something like that. That would be good.
For just the councillor, for just the chief or for everybody?
I think we could get a nice basket for the chief, maybe large enough for him to share if he wanted to.
I'm very good at putting gift baskets together.
Well, if, if.
You're, you're elected then.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so the plan is we're gonna have a schedule out probably by, by Monday of what is gonna be happening.
And can I just make sure that everybody's in agreement with providing that gift basket?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Councillor Beddingfield. Thank you, Councillor Rec. Thank you, Councillor Beasley Sovereign. Thank you.
So that, so the schedule is just an internal.
Right. Okay, yeah, it won't be published.
Okay.
Okay, any other business to come before the meeting?
Well, the t-shirts.
Well, for the fiftieth.
The, the t-shirts are there. So I, I, did you have time to do an inventory, Kim, of the, of the t-shirts?
I was, we were informed today that Kathy's coming by tomorrow morning to do them.
Okay, all righty, because we want you to get the t-shirts as soon as possible.
Fran, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, you saw it.
Fran, did you have a question?
Uh, just another potential question. What is the plans for the dedication? That's one issue. And then I wanted to talk about name tags for a second.
Oh, yeah. The dedication, what we're gonna do is, is Kim and I are gonna sit down and put together a proclamation of, of identifying the Depot family as our, our founding, whatever, members of the community and a, just a ribbon coming. It's just gonna be real simple. And then basically, we want to get them back up on the stage as time permits to share their stories of growing up here and that type of thing.
And, and the proclamation will be shared with the council on Tuesday night, so you can all decide if you're okay with it. Good.
And name tags. I love that idea.
So what I'm, what I was thinking, and I wanted her, but we can discuss this Tuesday if people wanna do this or can think about it, and we can discuss Tuesday. What I was thinking is that, you know, those blank blue and white name tags, people, when they come in, wherever the first place they encounter, would have markers and these blank, you know, tags. I know so many people in Depot Bay that I should know their names by now after so many years. And I totally forget, and it's sort of embarrassing, but it's also a way to, and they, we could encourage them to put how long they've been in Depot Bay on it or something. But then, so that would, those would just be, everybody fills it out. You know, Fran, rec, thirty years. But then underneath it, I was hoping that we'd have durable so they can be used in the future. It could say city council, city staff, uh, you know, harbor commission, salmon enhancement commission, emergency group, everything, you know? So when people are talking to Beanie, they say he's harbor, you know, I mean, salmon enhancement. So I, that was just my idea that we could use those name tags over again without putting people's names on it if everybody has a name tag. But that was my, we can talk about it more, but I was hoping that we could at least have these, you know, sticky things that come off, but, you know.
I love that idea.
Given that Tuesday is only, next Tuesday is only four days before the event, we, it would probably be good to have concurrence tonight so we can get them ordered.
I, I like.
Mayor, Councillor Beasley had his hand up, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Fran, that's a great idea. And it's a very, you know, it's, it's nice, but I'm hoping we don't do this again myself. So that's just my two cents.
So I have a question, Valerie. If we were to have the name tags filled out and, and everybody put one on, on themselves, would you have enough volunteers to help with that?
Yeah, I've got several gals. My, my daughter's bringing three friends, so, and then Lindy Gal would be great at that. She wanted to be at a table.
Oh, good, okay.
To help people fill them out? Oh, okay, okay. I also, Tiffany from the office here would probably love.
So we have four, five people that could sit. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So are you envisioning having a, a table when you first come in and having someone fill out a name tag?
Uh, maybe, maybe that could be where we put, maybe we need two tables.
Yeah, just like we talked about.
For the city area and then let people like have the t-shirts there, have the sign in, you know?
No, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Great.
So do we have name tags?
No, she would have to order them.
Okay, can you get them in time or do we need to go to an office supply place to get them?
If the council is in agreement of doing this, then I would need to know that tonight so I can put together the list of what we need. I mean, just getting the hello, my name as, is, will only take a few minutes. But the ones that we have to order that say city councillor or councillor.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to do customized ones this time. I mean, maybe later when we have, if we do this ever again. But for now, I would just, do, do you really want customized ones, Fran?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't customized. It was just generic. So city council, it's like when they go, when people go to meetings, you know? But I, I agree with Rick, you know, we don't really need them. We're not gonna do them again. So if, if like Tiffany does, you know, knows who. knows who the city counselors are, she in advance could have, you know, just stickers that, you know, we can just put on and then everybody else can fill them out. So that's fine. I'm okay with that.
What do you want on the stickers? Your name? Your rank and serial number?
Yeah, anybody who's coming from the city who volunteer, you know, volunteers for Planning Commission or City Council. You know, that wouldn't be hard to generate name tags.
Okay, so, so your name and your position?
Right.
Not counselor six or anything, just City Council.
City Council, right.
And I'm gonna send you a spreadsheet with the t-shirt information on it and that'll have the names on it too, if you wanna do, you know, just first names is fine.
I can, Tiffany will be back tomorrow. She had a loss of a family member, so she'll be back tomorrow and, and then this will be something good for her to work on.
Okay, anything else before the meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay, I think we are all adjourned, folks. See you Tuesday night.
Thank you everyone for knowing.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Kimberly, can I ask you a question?